Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We just came out of executive session, so we're just going to continue on with our meeting here. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence in memory of Mrs. Deborah G. Phillips, who was a former Haldane Receptionist Office Assistant in the district who has recently passed away. Dr. Bowers, actually, I'd like to welcome John D'Angelo. Thank you for coming. He's going to present on the Buildings and Grounds. At this time, we'll ask John, you want to start with John?
Sure.
We'll ask John to begin his presentation. Is that okay?
So, if I could just give you kind of an introduction. John has been with the district for many years and has seen many things that we're going to be speaking of actually play out through the years. And he has been meeting with us and our team to really look at what it is that we think that we need to include if we do this bond referendum. So, he can give you some background. He's been joining us for our B&amp;G meetings, a Building and Grounds meeting, and now we're going to talk a little bit about what we believe is necessary, and he can share the technical things that we certainly can't. So, John, thank you for being here, and if you could just give us an understanding of what it is that we're potentially looking for.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I didn't prepare a formal presentation. I don't know where we, I'll review where we are in the process, and I think as we proceed in the next couple of months, then we'll develop some more formal presentations and start to really look at narrowing down the bond and the scope of work and the work that we're hoping to complete within the bond project. We've been meeting in the last few months with the focus group, with the Facilities Committee, with administration, and with staff in looking to develop the list of projects that we'd like to include within the bond. In the next few months, or couple of months, in January and February, we'll be looking to really focus on that list and develop a more comprehensive work scope in working with our engineers and developing more in-depth cost estimates of the scope of work that we'd like to complete under that project. So, moving forward in near the middle of February, end of February, we'll have a really focused, defined list with a comprehensive cost estimate so we can see where we want to, or how we want to proceed with the bond, what projects might remain in the bond, what projects we might look at deferring or moving out of the bond, so we can start to develop that program to present to the public on the bond project and where we think we would be in costs and the size of the bond and what we would propose to the public for the bond referendum and the vote. Looking back, and the timeline we had put together was for a vote in the middle of May in conjunction with the budget vote. In order to do that, we really need to have a clearly defined bond cost and scope so we can go to bond council, prepare the resolutions that would have to be voted on at least 45 days prior to that bond vote, so somewhere around the middle of March, March 20th, somewhere around that date, to prepare those resolution votes.
So, could I ask you to talk a little bit about how we're going to reintroduce a study for what we're looking at and the timeline and who's going to be conducting the study?
There was an original study done in 2006, really analyzing the mechanical systems throughout the building on a report, and there were discussions at that time of a possible bond. There were some mechanical issues with the boilers at that time and with the roofs. It was elected at that time to just proceed with the bond to repair the roofs and do some exterior masonry. Subsequent to that, there was a project to replace the boilers that was done under an energy performance contract. So, our goal is, in the next few weeks, right after the holidays, to take a relook at that report, update the systems that were analyzed under that report, bring them up to current status, look at the equipment as it currently stands, the functionality of that equipment, the operation of that equipment. So, moving forward into the bond, we have a comprehensive list of what items would need to be repaired, what items need to be replaced, so we can develop a good cost estimate on the work that needs to be done under the bond. The discussion right now is to, the major portion of the bond is to replace the piping and the steam piping under this 1934 building wing, was originally steam heat. It still is. All the piping that's serving the equipment within this wing is original. Over the years, there's been some failures of those pipes, so we'll be doing an in-depth analysis of that piping, bringing in some metallurgists to analyze the piping, possibly some probes, cutting out some samples of some sections of pipe, or doing some ultrasonic tests. We'll do some initial evaluations, look to where the failures were over the last 10 years, look at those locations and see if there is a pattern that we see on where these failures are occurring, and then to do an analysis of the potential for future failures and to have a good database on recommending to, the need to really understand the definite need to replace the piping within this wing.
So, was that piping study was never really part of the 2006 analysis?
It was never a study that looked at the piping specifically. At the time, there was discussions in 2006 to replace the boilers, should we include converting at that time to hot water and eliminating the steam, and we really looked at the cost differential, and I think the cost wasn't there or the, to do that size project at that time.
Can you talk a little bit about the company that'll be conducting the survey? So, is the, our new survey that it's going to happen, is it the same company that was conducting a survey of sorts in 2006?
The engineering firm, Borelli Gallagher, was the same mechanical engineering firm that conducted the survey in 2006, so they'll be updating their initial evaluations at that time. We're also bringing on, hope to bring on another firm, Hoffman Engineers, the metallurgists, who would do the evaluation of the piping and the condition of the piping itself.
And I'm going to assume that they just do analysis. This company doesn't also, you know, just so we can be assured that it's like a truly independent survey, they're not also, you know, doing, they're not going to benefit from any sort of bond that gets awarded or passed, right? They don't do any sort of installation?
No installation. On the construction side, they are mechanical engineers who do design of the mechanical systems that would be incorporated within the bond. They would benefit if the bond passed as doing the design, I mean, doing the design services for the implementation of the bond. They would, I would, we would bring them onboard if the bond was successful to do the design. They'll be doing the initial evaluations and developing the scope.
Is that typical? The surveyors also become the designers?
Yeah, because they're going to be doing, getting a lot of that initial information on the existing equipment, and we wouldn't want to change companies halfway through the process to bring in another firm than to design the system. And they, about 90% of their work are school district mechanical design. We've been working together with that firm for probably 40, well over 40 years with that firm.
I think they would need to be truthful in their analysis. I see where you're going, but I would think that there's...
Yeah, I think, and the report hopefully will just generate the data, and then they would make their recommendations on equipment or things that they feel need to be replaced. And hopefully, we'll have enough information, and the goal is to have enough information where we can present it to the board, and then the board can really decide on what avenues we want to proceed down. Not pushing any specific technologies or any specific equipment, but just in making the recommendations on what is the best systems to solve the problems.
Sorry. Roughly, how long do you think the analysis would take, and then for us to get a report back, and then to even come back to B&amp;G and even begin that whole? So, we're in December.
Right. We're hoping in January to do our field analysis. By the end of January, to have a draft copy of the report done, then review that with Buildings and Grounds and staff, updating that in February, and really by the end of February, have a good in-depth, the report complete and the cost estimates done for the bond and the implementation to give the board enough time in March to really evaluate it and be able to, be able to have the cost and be able to make the presentations.
Okay, thank you.
So, one of the other things that we have done since our last meeting, and I think most of you should have received a copy of this, I know that they're floating around somewhere, but when we talked about the fact that we had a number of pipes that have failed throughout the district, we actually called in the people who worked with the pipes and determined, as to the best of our recollection, what pipes have actually failed. And what this is, is it shows that a dozen pipes throughout the district from 2002 to now have failed, and it talks about what part of the building they are, they're in, and what type of situation happened. And four of the 12 failed last year. So, we're starting to see kind of an upswing in some of the concerns that we have with the piping system. And I know people have an interest in saying how many pipes actually failed, and this is a list of the ones that our men have worked on in-house. And we're hoping, so far this year, lucky, that, you know, we haven't had anything happen yet, but this is what we've been dealing with.
Yeah, and as the system starts to really come online and gets more active with providing steam through the building, yeah, we'll see. But this is a good starting point because now we can actually look at these locations and to see if there is a pattern on where the leak has occurred. A lot of those questions have started to be asked by the engineers, were leaks in the supply side, on the steam side, or on the return side, the condensate return, as the steam condenses back to water, it's returned back to the boiler room. So, really looking at those type of questions on where the steam leaks occur, we can really get a good handle on what the potential life expectancy is of the piping system and if there is a real critical need to get this work done.
Unfortunately, by looking at this list, it looks like it's all over the place. We can't even narrow it down to a specific area.
And some of them are on the condensate side, some of them are on the steam side. So, there's, just looking at the list, it doesn't look like there's any, anything definitive or that we can point to and say, yeah, this is the problem, what we need to do is, you know, fix this spot and we'll be okay. And the other problem, too, with the test, we can do some test cuts in certain locations, do some ultrasonic analysis on certain sections of pipe. A lot of the pipe is buried in the wall. We can cut out sections that look great, and then, you know, a week later, there could be a failure in the other pipe that's buried in the wall that we really can't look at. So, that's always a potential problem in doing the report like this and doing the analysis on certain sections, but we're never really going to see the whole picture.
Okay. So, the other question that we had, and I know that the board has been talking about it for the last probably couple of months, but are we going to wait to repair the boys' and the girls' bathroom in the elementary wing until we have, we go to a vote and, or are we going to look at using repair reserve funds to do that now? And I think that, John, I think you were saying that we, you know, if we do it relatively quickly, we may end up being able to do something this summer.
It's really going to depend on the state. Right now, they're at a 30-week review time, so even if we decided tomorrow to go ahead with that project, completing the design, completing the documents for the submittal to the state, even if we got there early in February, we're still looking at not getting approval till July or August.
Wasn't there some discussion about wondering if it could be an emergency? I don't know that bathroom refurbishment counts as an emergency, but...
Well, it's in such a state that maybe we could do that. Have you had luck fast-tracking things at the state level?
Everybody wants to fast-track. Yeah, they're not, they're not looking favorably on, they're not taking requests for fast-tracking, is I guess the best way to put it. Everyone is trying to push, they're trying to implement some changes in Albany on how they're reviewing projects, and they're even looking at hiring third-party private engineering, architecture firms to review projects for the state. They're trying to implement that program. It hasn't been successful yet. Their initial plan was to have that program in place for November, but it didn't come to fruition, so they're looking at revamping it or trying another process. The state has hired an upstate BOCs to administer that program, and they haven't been able to really put it together yet. And if they do, it's their goal to get 600 projects a year out of their office and distribute them to firms throughout the state and really take that load off their personnel and really reduce the review time. If that happens early in spring, then there might be a chance that we can get an expedited review or their process would, their timeline would significantly reduce. And then, you know, obviously, if we have a quick review, we can get out the bid and get the work done this summer.
And if not, we would just figure out how to do it through the early part of the year?
If it's feasible to shut down the toilets, the work can't get done without shutting down the toilets for a period of time, so depending on, depending on how much flexibility we have.
But no, actually, unfortunately, they did have to close the bathrooms down. I think they got it to a condition that they were able to reopen it.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be closed down for a few days. If we're talking about a total gut and refinishing, it'll be over a period of months to get that work done. And even if we can do one of them and then, you know, do one at a time, it's still...
So, we'd have to do it over the following summer. So, it sounds like if we don't get it moving now with the hope that it happens this summer...
Yeah, even now, it's not a guarantee for this summer.
Then we would probably be looking at the following summer of 2020.
2019.
2019, thank you.
Yeah, so whether it's in the bond or not, it's probably 2019.
But if it's not in the bond, if we were today to say, let's do it out of the repair reserve, then there's a possibility it could be done in 2018.
There's a possibility, yeah, depending on the state review time.
But if we wait for the bond, then we're definitely not doing it till 2019.
Yeah, then we're not sending it up till July or August, yes, and then...
And do we have the money, Ann, in the...
And when we use the reserve, you get state aid back at 34% the following year?
It's going to be more than $100,000, so it will be amortized over the future, I think probably 15 years. But we have plenty of money in the repair reserve, and we would just need a public hearing that's advertised five days before the actual hearing in order to spend the money. It would not need a vote. You wouldn't have to wait for a referendum.
How are you guys feeling about that? I feel like we should do that.
Yeah.
Get that moving. Sounds like a big problem.
I mean, you could even do the hearing and still not do it. Even, you know, just because you do the hearing doesn't even mean you necessarily deciding to do it.
I think we really need more of an evaluation on those bathrooms. I think the problem is bigger than what originally was anticipated, from what we've been told in the B&amp;G, and I think Gary, at the last workshop with the B&amp;G, I think there's bigger problems there than originally anticipated. So, I'd like to feel more comfortable, get a deeper understanding, and make sure we know what we're getting into for sure. I think the boys' bathroom is a much different situation than the girls' bathroom, from what I gather, so, in the elementary wing.
I'll check with Gary on what issues he's, he thinks. What we were anticipating in the cost estimate we've developed is a total gut rehab of the toilets, so taking all the finishes down to the backup walls, opening up the plumbing wall, and then redoing the roughing within that wall. We would have to relocate a couple fixtures to get all the ADA clearance dimensions to meet current codes. So, that was our anticipation. If there's something beyond that, that Gary...
I'm not sure they knew exactly where that leak was coming from, either from above or from behind. Was that all figured out? That's something that...
So, if we're doing both toilets, up and below, then in all likelihood, we're going to find that leak if we're going to open up the wall. The only thing we might have to worry about if we do do it one at a time is if that leak is within the one toilet that we're not fixing, and we don't want it to damage the one, obviously, that we're going to repair. So, we definitely would have to look at that sequencing if that is an issue. Oh. Right into it.
So, okay. Do you think you guys are comfortable with just that the...
I don't know. I feel like, I'm no expert, but I feel like we've been told repeatedly that the bathrooms need to get fixed, like, for years, and I feel that the people who've been dealing with the bathrooms, you know, our maintenance staff and John and Paul, these people who've, like, gone in-depth into the bathroom who are experts, have also been telling us that they really need to get fixed, to the point where we're talking about putting them on possible emergency repair list. I mean, I feel like if we've got the money, we know we have to do basically a gut renovation, and whenever you do that, you find, you may find things that you don't know are there. You know, you can only anticipate so much, I think. But I think we need to have working bathrooms. It's like a no-brainer.
If the estimate was to gut the whole thing and redo it, then...
And we did include some contingencies in that estimate, so if we do open up walls and find something that's totally unexpected, we would have the contingency money built into the estimate to complete that.
Right.
Yeah, my inclination is to make this happen sooner rather than later.
I agree.
So, we're saying that the $200,000 includes the gut renovation and contingency costs at this point? Okay. Okay. So, Ann, if, well, we could do this at the next meeting, or did you want to move on it now?
I don't know. I mean, what are we waiting for? What do you, do you feel like you need more information?
Now, we would have to add it.
We'd have to do a public hearing.
If the next available meeting is January 16th, and you designate that as a public hearing, we would advertise it, and then the board could vote favorably on it unless something comes up in the public hearing that changes your mind, and then we could move forward on it because we have the funding. The repair reserve has over $670,000 in it, so we can definitely afford this project, and it does fall into the confines of a repair to tap that money.
Okay, so, it sounds like we all want to just do it.
Yeah.
Is that enough to, do you need its own separate meeting? I mean, not legally, but as far as length-wise?
I don't know. I think we could probably include it into what we're talking about at our next meeting. And John can, we'll have more information at that point that we don't have today.
The board might have to pass a formal resolution to use those funds.
Right, at the end of the public hearing. The public hearing can be at the beginning of the next board meeting, and then when that closes, the board can pass the resolution if they desire to do that.
We do like, we do the hearing at 6:30, you know, and then start to, like, do the hearing first and then just start the regular meeting.
Thank you for your time. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Paul. You're going to have to come up to the mic, sorry.
So, I had a question going back to the bond, a question to you, John. How does that affect the secret review? Is that, does this have to happen? Does the secret review start now? Can it start now, or is that postponed until another?
The board would have to declare a secret resolution, declaring that there's no environmental impact for the bond work. That work, sorry, that resolution would have to be passed prior to the bond authorization resolution. All the work that's proposed within the bond would fall under the category of a type two action, under the environmental law, which wouldn't require any in-depth environmental review. So, I don't think there's any lengthy secret process to get to that. It's just a matter of the board putting together the resolution, declaring it a type two action, and moving forward.
Okay, the reason for my question was in the last schedule that we got that was dated as, starting 12/19, so I just wanted to see if that's on schedule or if that's...
Not knowing that the bond scope, we left some time if there was a need to have an environmental review, if some portions of the bond project would possibly have some environmental impacts that would have to be analyzed or reviewed. So, since the scope is relatively contained, there won't be that need for a lengthy secret review process.
And the other thing is, I just wanted to thank you for approving to go ahead with those bathrooms because I think that all of us who have been familiar with them can attest that we could actually push the wall if we wanted to, but we want to keep it intact. It's a serious problem, so that's good, yeah. I'm glad you're moving it forward.
My concern really is this estimate number. Right.
Yeah, and you're right. I mean, there is a contingency built in... Yeah, and you're right. I mean, there is a contingency built in, but short of actually opening up probes and seeing what's back there, it's virtually impossible to know. But from the evidence that we see, there's not much there.
I feel much more comfortable, you know, Ann reassuring us that we have plenty of funds in the reserves to... Right. We obviously want to keep it, you know, well within that limit. I'm just afraid, being involved in all the B and G meetings, I've heard a lot worse from that bathroom situation than I think what's being anticipated. Thank you. Thanks for taking the time to come speak to us. Any other questions, comments? All right.
So are we having another workshop at the night, the January meeting then? Well, I mean, we're doing the public hearing, but that's going to be kind of another buildings and grounds-focused meeting too, right?
If it's going to be the hearing, definitely.
Okay. Thank you, John.
So just a couple of other quick things. Just a reminder that we still are planning a Family and Friends University for January the thirtieth. And we're going to try to entice you a little more to join us. One of the things that we are going to be including that evening is something we call Hidden Mischief that the Phillips Town CTC will be providing. And basically, for the parents in the room or the parents that are watching, you'll be looking at a picture of a bedroom, a teenage bedroom, and being, and you will be asked what you should be looking at or what should cause concern for the parent when you're looking in the room. And they will talk about some of the hidden mischief that is within that room and help train parents to know what to look for. So that's going to be an additional part of the Family and Friends University. So again, we, it'll begin at five o'clock with dinner of pizza and wings. We'll have babysitting available. And from six to eight-thirty, we'll have a number of speakers and different presentations about how to make sure that we have healthy kids that make healthy choices.
That's going to be held in the music room?
The, it will be actually in the auditorium.
Oh, in the auditorium, okay.
And we'll have a breakout session. We'll have two breakout sessions. And the main speaker will be in the auditorium. And then one of the breakout sessions will be in the auditorium after. And then we'll ask people to go to both breakouts.
I think we should start to put some e-blasts out about that so people can mark their calendars and start to get informed about it.
And what time is it?
It starts at five with dinner. From five to six is dinner. And then from six to eight-thirty, from six to seven-fifteen, we'll have Michael Nierney, who will be talking about the teenage brain, the adolescent development, and substance abuse and prevention. At seven-thirty, we'll have two breakout sessions. One will be Stephanie Marcusano, president of the Harris Project. And they will be talking about some of the issues that she dealt with as a mom when her, unfortunately, her nineteen-year-old son died from an overdose. And she'll be talking about co-occurring issues that really can put somebody at a greater risk to being put in that situation. And then we'll also have, at the other breakout session, Hidden Mischief. And then the last is that, just a reminder that we have canceled the January second Board of Education meeting. And between now and January second, we only will have three days with the holidays. And we come back on the second. So we'll just wait and put whatever information that we were going to share on the second at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll move into the information reports. And May, did you want to update us on any?
One of the things that was happening recently with the high school was the senior class held a fundraiser to raise money for the New Orleans trip. And what happened was that different members of the senior class had a babysitting fundraiser in the school. And so parents could have a night out. And another fundraiser that took place as well was the Leo's Club had its annual cookie decorating fundraiser, where members of the club and National Honor Society helped making cookies and frosting. And then on Thursday, the fourteenth, elementary schoolers came in after school to decorate cookies. And that was very successful as well. The high school concert was last night, and I unfortunately was not able to attend, but I heard it went very well and everyone did a great job. And also, in that realm, the high school musical was announced, which is going to be Les Misérables this year. And I'm sure that'll be great.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Go ahead. Yep, you're up, Dave.
Good evening, everyone. I certainly appreciate us talking about the elementary bathrooms. They're something very important to hundreds of students and adults every day. But we'll move into something a little bit more fun. You have my report, but I always want to highlight one item. Last week on Tuesday evening was our annual concert. We had a great performance by our fifth-grade band, led by Ms. Jessica Stein. We had a great performance by our fourth and fifth-grade chorus, led by Ms. Melissa Fraboda. But what I really want to talk about is our art show. Because we hadn't had an art show here in anyone's recent memory. And the art show was put together by Ms. Angela Branco, who's our new art teacher, our new wonderful art teacher. And it featured work from every student in our school, K through five. There was 2D artwork displayed around the auditorium for the people who were in the concert to see. There was 3D artwork around the halls, the first-floor halls. Tremendous crowds as people were wandering through and looking at all the artwork. The artwork was all very unique. It was all student-driven, student-done. She calls her classes an art workshop, and they really are an art workshop, using all sorts of materials. The children were able to label their own artwork, come up with their own names for their project, which is something that's really, really, really cool. So I know the majority of people sitting here were not able to join us last Tuesday evening, but I want you to know that it was a wonderful experience. We are already planning for the next art show. So we're very happy to have Ms. Branco here. I had nothing to do with getting her here. That happened before I was here, but I'm really glad she's here. And she puts a great program together for our students every single day. So I wanted to give a shout out to her. And I wanted to tell all of you about our art show, just in case you didn't see it or didn't hear about it. I know there were pictures online. The foundation posted pictures. I posted pictures. I think the district posted pictures. But pictures were great, but it was even better in person. So just want to share that with you and also wish everyone a happy holiday in case I don't see you before we leave. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Silke.
Good evening. The middle school also had their winter concert this month. It was very well-attended, and it was a mix of classic favorites and some new instrumentals from band and songs from chorus. I want to thank Ms. Fraboda and Ms. Stein for their hard work there. And also Mr. McDonald, a parent that volunteers, and his daughter Quinn, to do all of the light and sound. So it's really nice to have that feeling of community at our concerts. Coming up, we have the Community Read. The Community Read is going to be held on the evening of February twenty-second. And the book this year is going to be Wonder. We're going to do an introductory event when we come back from holiday recess. That's going to be a Drop Everything and Read event. So all students will be provided with the first two chapters of the book for the Drop Everything and Read to spark their interest in continuing to read the book. So it definitely should be a well-supported event. And we should see kids walking around with their blue books, reading Wonder. And in addition to that, just as an aside, announcing for the Friends and Family University, I discussed with Dr. Powers tonight, asking our students to invite their parents. So we're going to enact that idea and have our kids make invitations for their parents to come to the Family and Friends University. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Sniffin.
I've done a lot of these reports over the years, and I think this might be my most exciting one. So I, and I really mean that. I've kind of had an emotional couple days in the high school, or emotional couple weeks. To see the kids come in that are seniors with their acceptance letters is unbelievable. If you ever, Evan, you could probably speak to this. But to hear May, who got accepted to GW, super excited for her. And to see the smiles on the students' face, to see their hard work really kind of pay off, it's really quite impressive. So I just want to congratulate all the hard work of our seniors. They're doing a great job. Keep up. Don't slack. We've got a long way to go, but it's quite rewarding for all of us. And then just very quickly, I do need to thank the PTA and the HFA, the Teachers Association. We raised over two thousand dollars this year for eight families that are in need the holiday season. Renee Curry, Lisa Prey, and myself were able to do a lot of shopping and a lot of delivery over the last couple days. So just thank you to the Healthing Teachers Association and thank you to the PTA, who made enormous donations to make that happen.
Thank you. Dr. Shoa.
Just one comment, Ms. Sniffin, that we made at the last meeting about the students seeing the play, how you had them do that. So I commented that. I know it's because of the theme of it that made you do it, but I thought it was a great idea, and I would love for that to become like a... Right, well, but for that to become more of a tradition. I mean, I don't know how the drama program feels about it, but I think it was a great opportunity to make sure every kid in the, from six through twelve, got to see the full show. So, I mean, I think you should continue to keep that going as a tradition, regardless of the play.
I think the feedback was phenomenal, and I think the excitement around the drama program.
Yeah.
Having seen that, it was pretty powerful.
Right.
Thank you.
So I'm going to write Ms. Sniffin's coat tails for just a second. We'll have our second Healthing Academy graduate next month, if all goes according to plan. And it looks like it is, with the Regents diploma. And we have at least one more on track for June. So in our small, mini-high school over there at the Annex is performing really well and is getting a lot of good care from the two teachers that are working with them. They play a lot of roles, coach, sort of a mini-parent, big brother, big sister. But there's a lot of great work that happens at the academy. And so I want to applaud Gabriel Horn and Anna Pierce for doing such phenomenal work with those students. Also wanted to mention, from a special education point of view, that we've got some pretty interesting news, and I think amazing news, from State Ed. Last week, I guess it was, December eleventh, that the graduation pathways, which are varied and pretty, complex, but really, I say, that's kind of a Baskin-Robbins sort of situation with graduation pathways. There's something for everyone. But this last week, it really developed even further with now the CEDOS, which is a high school exit credential, now being a pathway for students who have difficulty passing the Regents coursework and Regents tests to get a local diploma. So that's a very exciting option for our students who have IEPs that do have difficulty in those areas but want to work towards getting their work hours for a CEDOS and to get a local diploma. So that's great news. Has big implications for planning for the high school for the future. One last thing I'll say is that I continue to work a lot with our elementary academic intervention services and Mr. Wallach on further refining and developing our child study team process. And for those of you who are not familiar, a child study team is the elementary and middle school and high school, actually, all buildings, but especially elementary, of using sort of a student-work analysis lens to address challenges that occur in the general education classroom, to develop strategies for students who aren't quite fitting with the general instruction. And involves a lot of moving parts and a lot of teachers and a lot of caring individuals. And we're really looking hard at the data collection practices we have, the tools that we're using, the strategies that we're implementing. So I want to thank Mr. Wallach for helping us sort of develop the data team, as we're calling it, along with Andrea Saunders, our Academic Intervention Services teacher. And I think we'll have a very exciting year, sort of, developing those practices together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solm.
Good evening. I just want to start with a quick thank you. I wanted to thank Mae Bang Wong and Joelle Van Sickle for coming in. They've recently taught yoga to several physical education classes from grades three through twelve. I also want to thank the HFF, HSF, just for supporting the grant. Having, you know, local yoga instructors come in, it's a great way to promote physical activity and healthy lifestyles while using community resources. So thank you to the foundation. And then I also want to just congratulate quickly our varsity volleyball coach, Kelsey Flaherty. She was recently named the Conference Three Coach of the Year, and that consists of all schools in Class B, C, and D. Our girls had a tremendous season. This is Coach Flaherty's second year here. She's an asset to the athletic program, and we're lucky to have her, so. And last but not least, just wanted to wish everyone happy holidays, have a great new year, and we'll see you guys when we get back. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you are all dismissed. If you'd like to have a good evening, happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, at this time, is there any communication from the public? No communication from the public? Okay. Moving on to Consent Agenda Financial, may I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. We're going to be approving a, the Fall 2017 Grants from the Healthing and School Foundation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Sorry. Consent Agenda Personnel, may I have a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. There really isn't much in terms of an update for the superintendent search because we discussed this at the last meeting. The online survey did close yesterday, and I haven't gotten any specific feedback just yet as to how many respondents we received. We were up to twenty-one. I don't know how many additional there were since our last meeting. But if any other additional information comes in, we'll be sure to update everybody at the next meeting.
So the survey's closed, the forums have been held, and now the consultant firm is consolidating that information, and we'll be presenting it to the board, and we'll work with them to create the ad. Is that what, then, happens next?
That's basically the next step. But we haven't received any of the feedback yet. I think they were hopeful that we would receive it by the end of the month. That leaves about a week left. But if not, I'm sure right after the holiday break, so. Okay. Any communication from the public? Going once, going twice? Sure.
So I, I just had a, just had a question about the appointment for the per diem substitute teaching assistant and substitute aide. Thank you. I knew I'd get there. So in looking back, Diana, you and I had spoken about this a little bit earlier. Looking back in previous board docs, I came across, just within the past year, two other circumstances where there was an individual who was appointed to a per diem substitute teaching assistant. And what I noticed is in those other two circumstances that those folks were also appointed as per diem substitute teachers, as well as substitute teaching assistants, at the same rate. And it listed it at the same rate of ninety dollars per day. And so I'm wondering if maybe to ease, because I, myself, when I read it, I was confused, as I said to you. I was confused by it, and I didn't know if that meant that, that this individual would not be able to substitute for a teacher. And so I just wonder if, for clarity's sake, if it should say that, if the appointment should be for per diem substitute teacher.
Well, I think we have to have the conversation with the person to see if she's interested in that.
Okay.
I'm confused by what you're asking.
Yeah, so am I at this point.
Well, I was confused by the, by the appointment myself.
Like, by the way it's laid out, you mean?
By the way that it's, yeah, by the way that it's laid out. I hadn't, I hadn't recalled seeing an appointment like that in the past.
Number four, the appointment of substitute teaching assistant and substitute teacher aide, Ms. Megan Crowe. Is that what you're talking about?
Correct. That's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about, yes.
So you're talking about what it's confusing, or it could be clearer, the fact that there are both, those two items are in one line, and maybe they should be two separate lines, like teaching assistant and like as a second item, teaching aide? Is that what you're...
Um, no. I mean, that part's clear to me, because it shows the different rates of, the different rates of pay. I was not under the, I was not under the impression at the time that Diana and I were speaking, that we, that the board had, I'll say we, that the board had in the past appointed per diem substitute teaching assistants. I was, so the conversation began with me believing that that's not something that had happened before, and so I did not, I was not aware that that was something that had existed before. And so in the course of our conversation, you know, I discovered that, yes, that the board has appointed substitute per diem teaching assistant. But in discovering that, I saw that those previous appointments had, the individuals had been appointed as substitute teachers, substitute teaching assistant, as well as, you know, whatever other appointments they were given.
So it's a title name.
It is. It is a title name.
So we should just list out all the titles?
Well, I don't...
No, 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 that's not what you're saying.
And I really don't want to talk about a personnel issue, but I will see if there's an interest in that.
Okay.
We can explore that.
Okay. Thank you.
One falls under one contract, and one would fall under another contract.
Right.
That's the issue.
That's the issue.
I don't know, Glenn. I think that she's wondering why that wasn't also put in as a substitute teacher, in addition to being teacher assistant and teacher aide.
It's a contract issue, and we really can't discuss this in public, so we can have a private conversation.
Okay.
All right?
That's fine.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no additional comments from the public, we'll move on to new business. The school budget development calendar is here for us to review. Ann, would you like to say a few words? Here we are, all over again.
I know, here we are, the riveting budget calendar. Yes, please. So it's basically the same plan as the development of the 1718 calendar. I know that we tweaked it a bit last year, and it seemed to, it seemed to work well for last year. So I made the changes, and when I saw, the only problem that I saw was with the April meetings, that we are scheduled to have our second meeting in April on the 24th, and that's a week later than our typical calendar. We normally meet on the 1st and the 3rd Tuesday of the month. There's, we're meeting on the 4th Tuesday of the month in April because of the mandatory BOCES budget vote. That poses a problem for us, because the property tax report card, the last day for me to file that is April 20th. Typically, the second meeting in April is when you approve the property tax report card, so we have a timing issue. I put a tentative additional meeting of April 17th. So really, that's, if you were happy with the way that everything flowed last year, the only thing that I want to point out to you, that you would have some decisions, is with those April meetings, that we'd have to have the property tax report card approved prior to April 20th. So the 17th, the 24th, you have to meet, but it can be a short meeting just for the BOCES vote, if you want to go back to having a longer budget meeting on the 17th. Those are just some options. You can have it really anytime you want. It doesn't have to be even on the Tuesday, if that doesn't work out.
BOCES has to be on, we have to meet on 24th?
You have to meet on the 24th for the BOCES budget vote. Other than that...
What if you do like a quick, like seven, even in the morning, like 7:30 in the morning, meet, quick meeting? Well, I mean, it would just be really a one, a one-item, a one-item meeting.
Careful.
Okay.
I like that idea, actually.
Well, why don't we see how it goes? Because we might have other things, you know, we might have superintendent, you know, you never know what we might need to add to that meeting.
Well, we're also going to meet on the 18th, though. So the 18th would be the, the 17th would be, would be a regular meeting. So.
Right. Okay. So I guess maybe we can pick a date, and then we'll ask Peggy as well.
Just when we talk...
No, but didn't you say, you mean pick a date instead of the 17th?
Right? It could be the 10th.
Oh, I see.
I did not think that...
We're not going to have enough time.
...we prepared on the 3rd, because if the, if the budget is right on time, and that's the 1st, it'll be too rushed, and there might not be the right information for you to make that determination.
Right, absolutely.
The 10th could be. So really, anywhere in between there, even, it could be on the 20th, but that's the very last date.
I like the 17th.
And when is spring break?
1st and 3rd Tuesdays.
In March.
That's in March.
It's in March. So there's no break anywhere near that that we have to be worried about.
So, I mean, you can, you know, this can, we vote on this, you vote on this on January 16th for the calendar, but of course, you've made changes to it in the past, so...
So put it down for the 17th, and then we can determine the time?
Right. You can determine that after, and we'll just get it on the calendar, and again, if it has to change...
Well, the 17th should probably be the normal, regular meeting in the evening. It would be the 24th that Evan was suggesting we meet at dawn, and Cecilia... The 20th, so the 17th.
The 24th wouldn't work.
The 24th will not work. No, that's for the property tax report card.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We would only meet just for the vote, for the BOCES vote, so...
Five-minute meeting.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
So we'll put it back to our normal April 17th for the workshop and the property tax report card, and you'll have your little mini-meeting at some time on the 24th. Okay. Thank you. That's what I'll do. Thank you.
Just as one little, as a side thing for April, that meeting, I'm on vacation that week in April. I don't have any necessary plans at this point, and probably, I think you are too, probably, right? And I don't know what Peggy's schedule is. I'm just saying, it'd just be something that we should just keep an eye out, if any of us find that we won't be able to make that meeting on April 3rd.
Right.
That we don't fall into a situation where we don't have a quorum, yeah. Right? Because you were off that week, too. I don't know.
No, I don't work for the school district anymore.
Oh, I think you did, I'm sorry.
Not anymore.
Okay, thank you.
But that is Easter week.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm not chiseling that in stone, so, you know, we can always change it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any additional comments, communication from the public? At this time, I'd like to make a motion to enter back into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual.
Second.
So moved, no.
All those in favor?
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.